Committee of the whole to order. Or members and guest. Brian for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please call her all.
Trusty Owen.
Here.
Trusty Brewer. Arson. Trusty Katschrell.
Arson.
Trusty Lomita. Here. Supervisor Fletcher.
Here.
For part of the special review.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. We have the agenda before us. Your board of men. Item supervisor, which I'd like to add item the agenda discussion of the proposed supplemental information request K two incorporated. Okay. Any other changes? Motion approved as amended.
Yes, support as amended.
Okay, there's support. There's support. How does it appear? Please say aye. Aye. How does it pose any name? Public comment? Anybody in the audience wish to speak this evening? Say the usual suspect. Go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I guess so. My public comment is in regards to Hockmettle Park. And the the idea I few months ago, my partner and I, we are both co resident managers at the Capital City Bird Sanctuary. The property across the street from Hockmettle Park donated by the same family.
Before you continue, ma'am, could you just say your name?
Oh, my name is Alana Christ. Alana Christ. And my partner, Linnea Rouse, who is not here today. Uh, anyway, we live at the house that Michigan Audubon owns. My partner is a wildlife biologist for Michigan Audubon. And I myself am a social scientist, expert in food systems and environmental studies. And we brought to Marcus and Parks and Rec Commission Board. The idea that the agriculture being practiced on approximately thirty acres of Hockmettle Park is not indeed a environmental quality or conservation practice as the deed stipulated for donating the land to Delta Township. And so we started presenting the evidence as such. You know, I won't enumerate all the reasons, but industrial agriculture depletes soil health, water quality, and is biologically virtually a desert. And so our idea was to start a conversation that looks like it came to a void vote under the commission. And I'm just here to express my continued support, both as a Delta Township resident, but also as a representative of Michigan Audubon and the sanctuary as a whole. And I know that the future is not up for discussion tonight, but I just want to also ensure the board here, the common, what is it called? The common, okay, the board that Michigan, both Michigan, myself and my partner and Michigan Audubon are very much in not just in support, but are open to working with the township on any sort of advice on how to convert the industrialized crockland into actual environmental habitat. And that can be not just for environmental quality, but also for greater public engagement and and use as as the deed stipulated. So. And also, I just wanted to offer myself for any questions, especially if this is new to any of you. I briefly, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Great, well, we definitely appreciate you being here this evening and sharing those thoughts and those comments and stuff with us as we engage in that conversation a little bit later.
Right, thank you.
Any other public comment? And then we'll continue on with the man for.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Um, a couple of things for you tonight. Number one, you probably read the newspaper. GM will be shutting down for about a month. It's a pretty normal thing and a good thing to retool for the Acadia. Also be roughly this December, almost Christmas through January twenty fourth. Uh, roughly, um, they have a couple of other shutdowns throughout the year, which again are fairly normal practice to retool lines. Um, tomorrow, uh, we right, we currently have a water main break on Saginaw over by between Worthmore and Crates. Um, so just east of the Kroger there, so it's a small one, but our crews will be working to fix that starting tomorrow evening at eight P M. So we will have some about a thousand feet of lane closure on Saginaw. About forty people and businesses affected will be shut down. We also are replacing a valve on one of the side streets there as well. So doing that at night, uh, need to be sensitive for the businesses and hopefully that'll all go well. But you'll see some activity there tomorrow night. Um, also another major component of our strategic plan, the new wastewater plants. Staff have been working diligently reviewing plans. Uh, so we're working towards the next milestone, which is on this Friday, November twelfth, where we'll be submitting ninety percent complete design plans for Eagle Review. Uh, so we've been responding, there's several more milestones that occur between now and receiving the approval of bid in December, January. Um, and hopefully still on pace to award the project to a contractor in March or April of next year. Um, so a big thank you to Rick and his crew, many people in the utility department and Ernie and his staff for spending a lot of time on these plans. This is one of the most important things that the township will do, probably in any of our histories here. Uh, last but not least, uh, today I with our corridor improvement attorney, Jessica Wood. We presented to the Lansing Community College Audit Committee, which had several other trustees. Um, and that was very well received. Our presentation on the C A A. So they are just waiting the next steps in our public hearing and whatnot. So, oh, that's all I have, but happy to answer additional questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, Brian, I don't know if you're able to answer this, or maybe Rick or Ernie could. But I know I've raised this issue a number of times, but Friday night, we the infrastructure package was passed and that includes for for water infrastructure. I think it's ten billion total coming into Michigan from that package. But I just asked again, just to make sure we're staying on top. Are there, does that, is that expected in any way to impact our wastewater treatment plant project and funding that might be now available that previously wasn't? Um, and I don't know if there have been any conversations. I know that just happened Friday night, so it there's everyone's trying to digest and there's still, you know, I think a lack of, you know, clear guidance on all of that funding. Uh, but I just didn't know if there are conversations with Eagle or if that I just want to make sure we're staying on top of that, so.
I think in Ernie or Rick or Courtney can chime in. I I don't think there's been anything new since it actually passed, still digesting information on what's actually included. But I mean, we're in good position for that. Usually any wastewater money will be routed through the S R F, which we're in the in that process. So I know the previous discussions, we had our green infrastructure funding eliminated and that went all in the at risk communities. But Eagle had said, you know, hopefully as more money is added, that could be restored or enhanced. So I think the impact will be hopefully that more grant dollars would come out of it and in our project would be uh, well suited, be in in the process and shovel ready and moving forward over the next couple of years. But I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
No, I think that's the best way.
Fantastic, thank you. I know I keep bringing that up. I just want to make sure we're not missing any opportunity there, so thank you.
We'll continue to, you know, read everything and anything that we have to fill out. We've been pretty on top of that, but yeah, that's certainly something. Um, because that's our foremost project that could be impacted.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Beth, you guys?
Uh, my question is along those same lines with the infrastructure pass. Is there any possibility or can we ask staff to keep on top of it, possibly using some of that money or asking for some of that money to address the flooding issues that citizens came and spoke to us about a couple, three weeks ago? I don't know if that qualifies as infrastructure. I mean, is drainage, it's not drinking water, but it gets flooding water, that sort of thing. And so Congressman Dingle this morning on the radio said, make sure every project's ready. So I want us to make sure that we're ready. And we know that's a problem and it's going to be expensive to remediate. So that's something else that maybe you can apply for.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if I I'm not sure how much money was going for drainage. I know they had some, but I think it was. A lot of it was more geared towards waterways, rivers and that type of flooding. So I don't think with normal drainage, um, there was a lot of money attached, except for maybe some sewer overflow um, money, but I don't know if anybody knows. I don't know if there's a mechanism to apply for that, but we can certainly look at that or or at least work with the Green Office to try.
Yeah, maybe the county level, they could get the money. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks. I know a couple of things, both of the ladies heard. I remember some questions I was going to ask, but on the latter one, I don't recall there ever being a any sort of equivalent of a state revolving fund for any drains, any private drains. It's always been for public works. I would be surprised if there would be any money diverted towards a similar type of program for private drainage area. That is a kind of worms and not just the state of Michigan, but to all fifty states. Something else entirely, but and then along to Andrew this point. You know, with several of us were at the uh, the Michigan Municipal League's session where they discussed grant money that's out there in the ether. Uh, not just the COVID Relief Act funds, but other things to the tune of like eleven billion dollars seems to ring a bell. And there were different categories. And they urged every township and municipality to try to determine every possible opportunity within those various programs that you might be able to apply for any assistance, you know, because it said like Detroit was already out there asking for two to three hundred million dollars, for example. And it seems like some of the larger municipalities have are aware of that and are being more assertive. And I just wouldn't want us to pass up an opportunity for a lack of not scrutinizing which particular of those public assistance programs are out there for all municipalities, including townships. And I'm not really familiar with all the particular, you know, individual programs of those. And I don't think they all fell under the umbrella of, you know, the COVID Relief Act. I think there was other ones as well. I could be wrong, but if the staff really thought about, you know, what is, what is the the universe of these particular things? And I'm not talking about the recent one that just passed. I'm not talking about the infrastructure. Talk of the stuff that was already in place, that here's all the different programs that are out there. Uh, I think the municipal league had an actual website that actually assisted their membership into ascertain and determining whether they could be eligible or be eligible for any sort of assistance that's out there under those various programs. As Brian, as you or staff, they actually had any discussions about that?
Um, yeah, I guess we, I mean, we do scour for any of those types of grants, especially for things like for large items like the wastewater plan.
But but that's not to interrupt, but that is a, that's an ongoing S R F fund that's been going on for forty years. That's not something that was unique and special, like, you know, the COVID Relief Fund Act and those other ancillary, I believe, uh, programs that help municipalities in in relieving the the economic stresses that they had to endure because of a variety of things, not just COVID, but COVID related directly, but also indirect stuff. So, um, there was, there was that website that they cited. Um, I can talk to you offline on it, but I just think we should at least be comfortable that we've actually done enough review of that to say, well, we may be able to be eligible for some of them, or maybe they're really out of reach. You know, we completely don't qualify. And I just would like to have some assurance that we're doing that sort of analysis.
Are you asking specific to the infrastructure projects or just in general?
Not the infrastructure I'm talking about that was presented at the municipal league.
Right, yeah, I mean, we are aware of that. We have received several reimbursement grants for, you know, in the COVID relief. I I think the pot of money that you're talking about is federal COVID money that the state is looking for ways to spend. And they they have not, um, uh, a lot of that, they have not put in the programs yet, but they are, it's roughly, I think, six billion dollars that they're looking for different ways. Um, I think I spoke about it at one of the previous board meetings right now, and they have kind of six areas of focus that they're looking towards infrastructure being one of them. But, um, I forget what some of the other categories are. Uh, but but we certainly are, uh, we certainly pay attention to all that stuff and access the M M L site. I think there was a, the, uh, the National Mayor's Association or whatever has that portal for for assistance with grants. Um, and and also I think at the conference also encouraged kind of being prudent with your ARPA money to try to also leverage some of those other
Right.
grants potentially. So, so, yeah, we are, okay.
I feel sort of with Andrea, I don't want to miss any opportunity, you know, for getting our fair share. Yeah. Well, thank you, Brian.
Other questions, comments? Okay, great, thanks, everybody. We move down to the committee of the whole items. First up is the discussion of the wastewater treatment. I mean, first, or.
My one, what they want to jump in on insurance, um, they kind of have their handful. So this is a different kind of insurance policy than something that was purchased before, which is why we wanted to kind of bring it up to your attention. So the owner's protective policy is something I hadn't heard of until we started kind of, I started hearing, started researching the project. Um, and it protects you against a design flaw that might occur. And in this project, you know, you're talking about ninety million dollars over the course of this project. And, you know, while again, everybody's reviewing everything and looking at everything, if something were to happen, it isn't necessarily a construction law, you know, where the builder just flat out builds around, but it was a design, a process flaw. This policy would cover the township for pollution, anything that would, it would allow us to basically kind of go back and then fix it under this policy. Um, so the the kind of issue is that it's a timing issue because we really don't want to enter into it until the bits are back before construction starts and there's going to be a window there. And so what we were thinking was if the board was supportive of moving forward with the policy, would have you approve the manager to enter into it during that time period with a general idea of the cost, maybe not the specific and allow us to do that. And then also with the builder's risk, we talked about in there, um, basically it's an option whether the contractor or the owner enters into that policy. And our hope would be that travelers, who's our current insurance rep or a, um, insurance agent's company, whatever, would be competitive because best case scenario, because we're doing work on new and existing. Now, if something happened, there wouldn't be a point with the insurance company as well. That was really existing, that was really new. So we would still put it out to bed and told have the insurance agent to do that in hopes that travelers, because they already hold our insurance, would be competitive. And if they did that, that was a recommendation of our insurance company, just because we're adding to existing. Something like the Sheriff's Office project where you're starting from scratch, kind of clean the deal. But it's just making sure that we don't have those failing insurance companies for the project.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, so you mentioned in the first, um, sorry, I'm going to, the, the owners protected. The first policy you talked about, um, if there is indeed a design flaw, because we had a separate contract that went out to, you know, for design, then obviously, you know, we'll award a contract for construction. Um, that doesn't in any way though relinquish responsibility or liability. It just covers us from additional liability we may have related to impacts from that design flaw.
So they have a limit, right? So their insurance has a limit. And so this would protect us beyond that. So if it was a twenty million dollar mistake and their limit is five or ten, it's ten, um, it would be beyond that. So there is would be responsible for kind of like an umbrella.
And, um, my other question was on the builder's policy. You know, you said it was recommended that the township get that policy, not not whoever was awarded that contract, the construction contract. And is that just because of the benefit of having the same insurance companies or are there other reasons? And then if they're not going to be responsible for having that policy, I don't know if that's normally, and I apologize. This is an area of insurance I have a lot of experience. But, um, if if they would normally be responsible for that policy, is that then something we see reflected in a reduction in the cost of the contract then?
Yeah, so they would be buying it and filling us back for it anyway. And then this way, if we did have a problem, we could go to the insurance company directly, get them to do it. It's like then we're a third party, right? This is first party, we have the policy, we contact, that we get things in motion without having to go through that. So I think it's kind of too bold in that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Generally, I will just say I'm I'm very supportive. I think it's wise to have the insurance coverage and not put the township in our taxpayers' at risk. So I was supportive of that. I just had a few questions.
Yeah, just for the large project, yeah, no.
Okay.
Um, I too, um, I'm in support of this. I would, I could support this when it comes before board meeting. I wanted to know, have we sought out advice or experience from M T A or M M L with regards to having this level of protection? I don't know if they've had any other experiences in municipalities going through a build like we're doing. So the bill is what we're doing.
No, I I don't know if the M M L or M T A would have anybody who could speak to that. I mean, we've got insurance professionals and and attorneys, um, uh, who, you know, deal with that, um, and not reached out to other municipalities, to my knowledge.
Or like, you know, or police org.
But I I think being protected for ninety million dollar project is pretty wise.
I can say too, from having built in previous communities to wastewater plants and then water plants, you know, there are so many nuances to these projects. Next, and and sometimes it's not always a clear cut. Oh, that's a design issue. The designer says, yeah, oh, geez, my bad, and.
Or they're pointing, not design, it's that one.
So this, um, as as we understand, it gives, it gives us that, you know, when you're talking about a ninety million dollar with a lot at stake in terms of the Grand River or people's homes, we have the ability to access this policy immediately while things are being thought out versus, you know, fighting with the design team, you know, wondering who's going to end up footing the bill for an expensive repair. Hopefully, I mean, we put in a lot of work, you know, three years, four years of effort into this. But you you know, in a project this large, there's, I mean, there's never any guarantee that, you know, you don't incur some, some problems. But, uh, I think this, this will help all of us sleep.
Sleep better. What is the term of the policy? What would be the term?
Thing about it, I mean, it's basically it's past the end of the project, I think it's six years past the end of the project. So I mean, it goes, which is kind of the maximum of Michigan. Correct, so that's the nice thing about it is that it doesn't end with the project, it goes on past the project. That forms the benefits too, because everything isn't always obvious right away.
What is the duration of that? Number of years?
Yeah, I think, I want to say it was six or seven, half the end of the project. If it's not in there, I'll put it in the last.
I think it says seven years.
Yeah, because I know.
And the assumption is if it's a design flaw, it probably would manifest itself, you know, within that timeframe or something, I would assume, not like a, a piece of machinery or component that fails because, you know, the manufacturer, you know, wasn't to the stretch or something.
Yeah, it's actually ten, because that's as long as the policy and that's also as long as Michigan likely has.
So is this correctly characterized as a third party rider that's under the umbrella then of the, um, our insurance company? Or is it power?
This is totally separate. Well, on the, um, the owner's perspective professional is not affiliated with our liability. So something totally different, a specialty.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sort of product that doesn't have as many.
So, okay, it was just recommended then, and then we will be paying for it.
Right, so there's a couple different.
So it'll be, it'll be direct, you know, two party insurance and sure.
Directly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You get some thunder.
No, I didn't, I'm sorry, I was doing.
So you said that the coverage is good for ten years. How long do we pay for the policy just as early?
Just once.
Just, oh, it's just one fee.
Yeah, because this was the fee for the whole project. So we'll decide, I mean, and because it's designed, it's kind of connected, it's tough to separate based one and two because the design was interconnected. So this was the quote for the the project. Right, so the builder's risk would be annual. This is once.
Other questions? County Sheriff, substation update.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring a quick update back to you. Um, we've been making very good progress on this project. Uh, so just to let you know, who has kind of been on the work group is myself, Bernie, Courtney and Alana from the township and Jennifer, her name's Department Assistant, helps coordinate all the meetings and and that type of thing. Uh, we've had the representation from Eaton County Controller's Office. And then also Lieutenant Tyrell and Chief Deputy Adam Morris have been in all the meetings. So, um, up until this point, we've essentially completed for the most part of the programming and needs assessment uh, for the, for the sheriff's office and and day to day operations and their needs for space. Um, so roughly ended up around fifteen or sixteen thousand square feet. Um, our current facilities are around eight thousand square feet, so it's roughly about doubling the size. Um, although it's less, if you remember from the two thousand six, two thousand seven plan, that was in the, that was roughly twenty two thousand square feet about, so quite a bit less than than those plans. So, um, right now, we're, uh, it's back with the architect and really working on refining some numbers. We have narrowed in on a couple of potential locations. Um, worked a lot with the sheriff's office and looking at response and that type of thing. And and basically narrowed kind of an area where they felt comfortable operating out of. Um, and and there's a lot of variables with that, which we will bring to you at a, at a future date. Um, but we have some potential locations in mind. We're putting dialing in and refining numbers, comparing it to rebuilding in place, which creates some logistical issues. Um, so, but want to feel or bring back those financials. So it's a, it's a very brief update, but I wanted to bring that to you. Um, because I think once we, once we get those final numbers, it really will, I think, spark the need to have some discussions, one about revenue and two, uh, depending on, um, some of the property that might be available to me. Uh, we may have an urgency to act, at least to secure some property. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that, that that might be coming quick. But again, I want to make sure we do our due diligence and, um, refine the numbers for that. So, um, as I said, I don't have a lot more at this point, but happy to answer any questions.
Um, just a question, Brian, are we still considering having a, um, place within the dwelling to hold inmates? And I can't remember where you stood on that. Last time you said possibly or not. I mean, I mean, you said no, you were not thinking.
No, the the sheriff's office does not want it. No, the the sheriff's office does not want it, and I don't think we want that, um, so we do have, um. Uh, in the in the design and assessment, we do have interview rooms that can be used as a really short-term holding, but. There would not be holding cells, um, because those bring a whole new realm of staffing and, uh, other security issues and that type of thing, so.
And then we, so we would have enough staff to escort anyone out, I I'm taking it that they'd go to Charlotte? There's there's capacity staff to do that?
Yeah, just like they're, I mean, really just like they operate like that now, so I think that, um, you know. Without getting too far into the way the holding cell is, you know, you need to go with, obviously, read the. Um, the newspaper from like City Lansing or Inum County, I mean, there's been several, that's those types of things, so there's a lot of different variables that. Come into play there, we're really not big enough to have, you know, holding cells up here, um, it's, you know, those types of situations, it's a lot better to go to, you know, bring to Charlotte.
Another question to Brian. To the item, Dennis's request there about information.
Uh, thanks, Ken. Give it some thought to, uh, some of the information. Issues that I personally have had, um, regarding the, uh, you know, the the TIF proposal that was recommended by the CIA. And I have made it very clear from the very beginning that, that there's been an, uh, an, um, assumption of the proposal that there's a, uh. There's a, um, a gap or without the input of Delta Township, that it's just not feasible for the Delta Crossing to build out to be financially successful. And so, uh, I think the thing that concerns me is that when I go through all the individual tables, the financial tables that are in there. Nothing really points to that, yet just, uh, points to increases in taxable value during the different phases and the capture and the disbursement and all that. So I've started thinking about this in a different context, in a different framework. And that is, instead of like, well, it's just a reimbursement for, you know, an outcome, it's really more of a co-investment by the township. In partnership with K two. And that co-investment will result in some benefits, and the benefits is more than just increased taxable value. Is like, what does it mean to the residents, I mean, they don't really understand taxable value necessarily, but from a township point of view, and for an ease of. Articulating that to our residents, it's really, what would be the net revenue that would be returned, uh, after a fulfillment of a co-investment strategy? With, with K two and the build-out of the Delta Crossings for all five phases. I think that puts a real positive spin on that, uh, it's easier to explain, but the other thing is, is there is the premise that. This cannot, is not feasible without the partition of Delta Township, and I have asked in the past, well, is there a gap? Um, and if so, uh, is there some way that can be articulated? And I cannot find anything along those lines in the submitted documentation that was recommended by the CIA. So I have done a cover letter here that sort of outlines what I think would be helpful for the board and our residents to understand. And if the two things would be embodied in a table, and one would be a comparison that could be shown. That the added cost of incorporating a public infrastructure exceeds the marketable lease or sell rates in a comparable market environment. What that means is that there are certain market rates that can be charged that is attractive for the occupancy. Of certain buildings, whether that's retail, whether that's commercial, whether that's residential. But if the added infrastructure costs are not invested, co-invested by the township. There's a quantifiable increase in the required marketable lease rates, sell rates, et cetera, that makes it unfeasible, it just can't work without that. So that's a quantifiable showing of why a co-investment by the township, you know, is necessary to make this a successful proposition. And I think that's a different way of looking at it. And the other thing is, well, what's in it for Delta Township? Aside from the new taxable value and the revenues that are coming to us, the twenty percent set aside. I think the more dramatic, um, comparison is that after the the TIF, um, has been concluded, the twenty-year timeframe. You know, what will be the net revenue that the township and all the other tax authorities will get? That's new and above what the base level is, whether it's, when it's vacant land, that number will be very, very large. And it's very easy to understand, I think, from a board perspective and from a resident perspective, that this is at the end of this period. Not only are you going to get this amount, not taxable value, but an amount of revenue, and look what'll happen when there's a fulfillment. Of that obligation for Delta Township is putting in as a co-investment strategy, AKA the fourteen point three million dollars. That will be a huge number, and I think that's very persuasive to the township residents, that this is really a strategic co-investment strategy. That is unique, it's the first time we've done it, so I like to think of this as reframing how maybe it was presented to us at first. A lot of the elements are the same, but it's really, it's how it's reframed and with additional very succinct information. That is not divulging any proprietary information. It is, some of it is existing in some of the tablets, tables that are already there, but not entirely, and some of them are dependent on really what, uh, K two's intent is for. Phases three, four, and five, which are, you know, flexible, we understand that, and I would add that every single figure in all those tables is nothing but a best guess scenario. So I I what I'm proposing is that, you know, a very disarming and, um. Um, a logical request for two pieces of information or something comparable, and those would be embodied in these two tables. And I can go through it with you, but it's what I basically said, is that what is the current tax revenue that we get on vacant land? What is the investment that K two's putting in per phase, and that would be the new taxable value, I talked to Ted Drosty on this. And I said, Ted, does that really include all the ancillary costs of what the new taxable value would be, and he said. Pretty close, because it's a brand-new piece of property, that all those ancillary costs, like cost of the, um, the closing costs, you know, the insurances and and all these types of things. That go along with putting the building together is pretty much captured in the formula that they use in establishing new taxable value from scratch. So, okay, then that could be the, that could be the standard, so what's the percentage of the investment for that phase? What is our investment for the infrastructure for that particular phase in dollars? And what is the percentage, those will need to a hundred percent, but I think the real key of the key here is, is, you know, under the, uh. The the listing here of the Delta Thomas's return on investment is what would be the future tax revenue in dollars? And the increase and the percentage increase as compared to what it was when it was started, which was just raw land. After the fulfillment of the twenty-year TIF time period conclusion, it will be a huge number, and it would be significant, and I think that's a real easy demonstration. Project for our our residents, uh, I think it's an easy, easy, uh, thing that they can understand, and I think it puts it in perspective. And then the second table, it gets to the heart of the thing, where where is the necessity needed to make Delta Crossing's project feasible? Why is our co-investment required? So it's sort of the same methodology, is there, there's a market rate and lease sale rates. That exist per square foot for the types of buildings that are in those particular phases. Now Ted said that we know what's in phase one, phase two is sort of complete, but not yet, and it's retail, with some commercial and some restaurant. But he doesn't know what the intent would be for phase three, other than maybe some type of residential, phase four, I'm not sure. And phase five, so he's not comfortable even trying to protect that, he would have to rely on K two to to provide that. But the market rate and lease sale rates for square foot in a comparable market, you know, it's an area, is a known, known figure. It's a known figure that they all have to buy by, and what would be the increase that would have to be, um, absorbed in building the rates if we did not participate in the co-investment? Well, the difference would be an X amount of dollars, and that would illustrate, it cannot compete in an open market because of the added cost. So in my personal, that this is a very simple way of showing the gap, or showing it's not feasible. That Chris has said all along, without getting into any sort of proprietary financial information, just using market rate information that's out there. And it shows, I believe conclusively, that there is a need in order for this development to succeed in its entirety. That it has to be a public partner, private partnership with a co-investment by Delta Township, just based on market rates, just based on the market lease sales that exist. Because you have to be competitive, so I I'd like to have some just discussion on this, I think this is a very, very benevolent and benign type of request. I think this puts it in perspective of a co-investment strategy, and I think these two things together really simplify. Really how we can justify and tell our residents in terms that they can understand, that really gives us a strategic co-investment strategy. That will benefit the township in the long term, I I really think that's the way to go, and I just wanted to have a, you know, a discussion about it amongst the board.
Well, this is the first that I've seen of this, and and we have Suzanne Schultz, and we have an attorney general for Woodin who has been advising us on this, so I want them to be part of any such discussion and have their. Review and analysis as any issue, we always have a staff review and analysis that provides us with pros and cons and thoughts on that, so. I would like to see that provided to us before we have, uh, any discussion. My first response, based on just what I'm seeing here, the top part is really stuff that's all included in the annual plan, talking about what K two is investing. The fourteen million that we would contribute or reimburse in partnership safe or the building and construction of infrastructures documented in the plan. The projected increases and how much that it provided in the twenty percent pass-through, how much that provided, and all of this stuff is in the plan there, so that's our account spelled out.
Yeah, I spotted that.
And then, until I've done it, I'm not debating, I'm just sharing my thoughts and my reactions. Um, and and part down here, we're obviously going to get back to him to demonstrate some need, which is a new criteria for economic development incentives, where we have them. Present some documentation of need, which hasn't happened yet, so some of the things I'd want Suzanne and Jennifer Woodin to weigh in on is. A, we're in the eleventh hour, changing the rules and adding a new request at the eleventh hour in the process. We haven't asked for these types of requirements for any of the other taxes that we have done, and we have no policy coming for it. How does that, does that open us up to any type of legal jeopardy by doing that? Does the law allow these types, or is there any provision in the TIF Act that allows governments to add additional type of financial requirements, disclosures on it? And if it does, who's done it, what type of things have they asked for in terms of disclosures? Um, I guess I'd want the way in on how do our economic developer, park development partners, like LEAP and the Chamber who's involved in economic development. How do they feel moving forward if we start making this a requirement? How would that impact, say, the general waters, if they say they want the taxation to expand and they have to document it? And other residents in the community, so I think once we have all that information and it is presented and I'm opposed to reading, so the discussion can be held with public awareness. For having that review of our economic development strategies, so that they can weigh in and discuss it and do it in an open and transparent way, I think would be a good thing to do.
Well, if if I may, um. I am not saying that we send this out today, I want to just preach this, approach this with the, uh, with the board, because I think it's simple, this is not divulging anything. You know, actually, what we're, what we can probably do, the top for phase one, phase two ourselves, according to Ted. But he's unsure about phase three, phase four, and five, so he isn't real comfortable in trying to put together, the difference is this, is that it's like, what is the actual revenue? The revenue that comes in, not taxable valuation, and that's based on on basically saying, okay, this is the current interest rates, it's a real number. Uh, it's not specifically included in that information, we didn't require any of that information, by the way, that was voluntarily submitted by K two. So if we're asking, can you expand upon that a little bit, that's not requiring anything. And I think it's a stretch to say that we're adding all these other conditions and things like that, which we're not. All we're saying is, let's just make this a little clearer, let's make this understandable for our residents, and I think that. This provides that sort of assurance that we, as a board, are doing our due diligence, it's not divulging anything, no proprietary information. Uh, and this is a different animal, by the way, we've never done one of these before, it is not an industrial facilities tax abatement, it is not a brownfield. And so this is new territory, and if we were to require as a term and condition, that would be different. This is just a request, a polite benign request, clarify, so we can understand and make it more understandable for our residents, so that we can do our proper due diligence.
Well, I just have concerns that, well, first of all, the timing is a subject unto itself, but. So we're, I'm concerned, the position it places us in, that we're selectively going after. Businesses, and just to be frank, Dennis, you've objected to this all along, and I think it appears that it's selective just to them, which.
They are, no, we're not having it back and forth.
But I I just, I I'm concerned about that we would selectively pick on projects. Don't know what kind of message that sends.
Other comments?
Yeah, thank you, um. Dennis, thank you for creating something, a tool for us to consider. Um, I agree, the timing is near, it's getting very close to where the board is going to have to make a very big decision. On whether to co-invest or partner with with, um, K two, uh, so.
But let, let, I just wanted to clarify here, when we started talking about co-investing.
I'm just referring to, but may I, may I finish my comment?
You may, but.
Because I have the floor, may I finish my comment? Thank you, I didn't interrupt you, what I'm saying is, I just simply, I I.
I wasn't trying to interrupt your thought process, I was just trying to clarify that.
But I just want to, I was just referencing what was on the document, didn't say I was in agreement with it or not in agreement. I'm simply referencing the document that's before us, is all I was saying, so I'm using the wording that's before me. Not that it's been approved or any of that, but my point is, is that we're all gonna make this decision, and we've all been where we are, and, um. I'm certainly, um, struggling, I know I've had challenges with this, but I'm looking for ways to get to a yes. And so I'm looking for the answers that I need to be able to stand before people to say, yes, I stand behind us making this investment. I need to be able to stand before people to say, yes, I stand behind us making this investment. It's wise, I believe in development, I do. We've just never had a request to this level. So I want to know that we've done everything we can do. Um, I don't know how much work is involved in this particular tool, I don't know. Um, I would rely on staff looking at that and people analyzing that. But I don't have a problem with getting more information to make an informed decision, that's all I'm saying. That pro or for or against, just I don't have a problem with more data. And I don't think we're isolating anyone, we've not been in this position. And um, so that's all I want to say, thank you.
And other comments, but I, I didn't just want to, just the term co-investment, that implies that the Delta Township is somehow. Owning a piece of this development, which is not, this is not like Eastwood Town Center where. Where Lansing Township actually became the developer and was actually investing money in building things, we're not doing that. It's a reimbursement for the cost of the public infrastructure, what they're specifically asking for here. Um, as far as, you know, it, it is different, but we have had different economic development tools, there's the. The abatement for industrial, there was a brownfield credits, there's the commercial rehab. And we could have asked more lease, show us your leases to prove you need money to renovate. Or show us your contracts for your call center work to show us you need money to. Rent this building, we didn't do that. So. Even though it's a different type of tax, it really is all in the sense we haven't required before.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the comments, I, I know the term co-investments been used. It does make me a little uncomfortable and it gets a little bit to the point that you made supervisor about. Having feedback. And, and counsel from our consultant and legal counsel. Because there's nothing in. The CIA statute and the TIP statutes that talk about that, and I think we do need to be careful about what actions we take. What we do and that is, is it is. About in compliance with the law, it doesn't. Put us, the project, all of that potentially in jeopardy because of how, and, and I'm not. I'm just not comfortable making a decision like this without. Advice from our counsel and that our consultant and legal counsel on this. I, we hired them. To guide us because this is something we haven't done before, and I think we should. Uh, rely on their expertise. In matters like this.
Jiggle, just wanted to comment before Dan starts speaking.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to say that to this date, my biggest hesitation in all the CIA work has been the expressed concern that I don't know enough. To vote yes, I want to get to a yes, as Mr. Brewer said. But I want to make sure that my yes vote is based on complete knowledge. Of the costs and benefits for residents. You know, this in return on investment. So that we're being strategic in our economic development investments to support prosperity, to support jobs. To support local residents and to create a good precedent for future tips, what we do now will roll into future tests. And if there are known unknowns like this, I think we should turn them into knowns. So that we have all of the dollars. And as she stated, I don't know how long it would take, it might be that they have these and it's just a matter of copy paste into this or even. Forward something to us, but if it, it helps us turn those known unknowns into knowns. And makes it so we can stand in front of our residents and say, this is a good thing for you and your family for. Future jobs, for future prosperity of all of us. Then, you know, I want that information so that I can get that yes.
So this is just the concept, okay? And if there's. Pasternation over the word co-investment, the reason I. Do that. Was to try to reframe this in a positive light. Okay, reimbursement isn't necessarily a positive light, because I've heard. People say, and some of them are sitting on our planning commission. It's corporate welfare. That's all it is. And, you know, I, I don't think that's helpful. If people that are serving on our citizen boards and commissions, that's their opinion of it. And so I'm trying to think like, well, what is a positive light? So we as a board can feel comfortable. And having that a slowdown and not feel like, you know, it's, there's just hasn't been. A, a full. Good faith effort of, of trying to show. In a. Non-disclosed of proprietary information way that. There is a market need for reimbursement, use your word, use whatever you want. To make this work, otherwise it cannot work. And I know Chris has been saying that, but none of it shows in his documentation that's submitted. At the CIA reviewed and sent to us. And I'm just thinking that, well, let's. Let's, let's think of this as a positive. View that the residents can understand. And without being intrusive or anything like that, it's a request, it's not a requirement, it's not a term and condition. Uh, and to actually take up the. Commitment that provide any information and provide any answers that we may have. You know, I've heard that, uh, at one point, uh, Chris has been said that I'll open the books, I mean, he said that in public. Well, that became problematic and I understand that. And I don't necessarily think we should even consider that. But if this is necessary to make it marketable, that should be quantifiable. It should be easily done. And it's just, it's just a basic business principle. But I have no problem, I just wanted to throw this out for discussion. Because I'd like to get unanimity on this board. So we can look at our citizens and anybody that says it's a corporate giveaway. Well, no, not, it's not really. It's really not corporate welfare. And here's the reason why, because it's not feasible and at the end of the day, look how much extra tax revenue. Dollars we're going to get when it's built out. Much more than it ever be. Hundred percent more actually, than nothing was built on the pedal.
But that's been the argument from day one, that resting two hundred million dollars. But it's not quantifiable, going from a field to a great development. They're asking in return that they're allowed to be reimbursed fourteen million of the taxes they're paying, nobody else's taxes, their taxes that they pay. They get reimbursed for a public asset that gets turned over to us immediately upon construction. So I think that that's been part of the discussion, so. Uh, to, to say that hasn't ever been said, I don't think so.
No, no, it's, it's.
It's a different way of saying. Let's refer this off Suzanne, to the attorney, to everybody that we said, let them give their thoughts and views and they can present it.
I'd just like to have, you know, a, a rethinking of how we frame this, simplify it so we can. Feel comfortable and explain that to our residents, so we can all have unanimous support for this project and that. And I think it just is beneficial for the township, because it's not gonna look good. For the township and it's not gonna look for the region. If these things are not. I would say answer to the satisfaction of the board as the whole. And it just does not provide and present a good. Good look. Yeah, I think it'd be a mistake and we have a chance, and as far as timing is concerned, I'll just leave this. This is just additional information request in this format, not even wedded in this, I'm just saying, let's think of it as a different way. And then we can all agree on this. And we can have unanimity in what we want. For this township to go forward and improve in this project. I mean, I'm trying to bring everything together. That is my intent, that's all it is, so let's bring our experts in and have a discussion about that. And let's take Chris up on saying, yeah, I'll answer any questions, what do you need, okay? You know, let's, okay, let's do that. So I just throwing that out to the board so we rethink this in a positive light.
Yes, yeah. Okay. And I would say at the end of the day, there's gonna be people that will say it's corporate welfare to do that from the get-go. And frankly, there's been a lot of negative stuff that's been put out there for the past year to paint this in a negative light for the public. Uh, the handout that you made, I, I put on the list of negative.
Okay, Ken, this, this is where we agreed not to go.
Okay. I'm just saying, you say that the public, there's some that will have a negative view, I, I'm just saying that there has been people who have been trying for the past year. To make sure the public has a negative view of this. And at the end of the day, we always make a decision, yes or no, there's gonna be people that agree with us, or we feel that this is.
And that, that is true, I understand that.
And that's what you do as, as an elected official, you make that decision and what's the best issue.
But my intent here, my intent is trying to bring the board together. That is my intent. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, when we have this conversation with Lea and the Chamber. Can we ask if there are other, because there's lots of TIPS in the New Michigan area? Is this? Something that's? Been asked of other projects?
I mean, I, I think that's part of what I originally thought in terms of. Does it allow it, have all this done it, what information do they request, if they added additional types of information, so that's all the type of information we need to make an informed decision. And you know, I, I suspect there's probably some people on this board that received this in advance and had a discussion. And saw copies of it, uh, so there's some of us flying blind and some that know more about it than others, so, uh. I just want to make sure that we have.
I honestly, I, I am, I'm getting more and more offended. As you speak, to state something that you have no knowledge of. Is just, it's not responsible. We're looking at this at the same time, so for you to make a statement that further divides us is not helpful.
How do you know that?
I'm just saying, but you don't know it either, but what, what, what does you, what do you garner with that? What goodwill comes out of that?
I'm saying that.
It's just not.
Because out of this, I'm saying, first I've seen of it, we want the staff review that we always have.
Well, so let's assume it's the first everyone's seen of it, except for the author. But to make that statement, it's not fair. And it's not responsible.
Well, we move on to the closed session, so we want to, or actually we'll take some final public comments, if anyone makes any final. Public comments before we move to closed session. Do you know, somebody like make motion on the close session?
So we'll be going to closed session.
If we move this party going to closed session.
Yes.
Trustee Kestrel?
Yes.
Trustee Moonbeam?
Yes.
Still got any questions?
Yes.
But Mike, just trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Okay, and we need to close session across the hallway into the next room.
We are. Are we coming back here?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, I'm, I'm a little unsure if, if my, if I have any more. Participation opportunity.
There will be, uh, will there be other for comment?
But, but after the closed session, like in other words. Any more reason for me to?
No, you can hate it there.
Okay. I do, did find this very interesting. Great, thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
I don't know how the base ended. I don't know how the base ended. But I don't know. Yes. Yeah, thanks. It's complicated. I'd really prefer just to have the physician to do it.
Yeah.
And not have to wait in wait back January.
Yeah. Because of rush.
Right.
So as I think now bringing it through, it looks like it has a larger problem.
Yeah, pollution, yeah.
Because that's where we're gonna get the most heat.
Right.
Is not even climate.
Yeah, and so that way, if something happened and you know, if it was fine on the construction, we could, you know, have this covered or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pollution would have been.
Well, I don't know if you've ever met the D E or HLE lawyers. They are.
Back in the day, we had an ACL for bypass inter-ventricular.
They're very utopia.
Yeah, exactly.
It was out open.
Yeah. No, I think it's really good.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else there?
Hopefully our person's came themselves for it.
Yes.
They are quiet.
So return to open session now. Okay, we don't have to grow. Any final comments before we hear? Can I not say no further than before, Sergeant? You missed it.